Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight is the opportunity to receive public input on specifically on the bonds that we that you just mentioned. The process to issue bonds is quite lengthy and can be kind of confusing. So the purpose of my presentation right now is to hopefully answer an ample of questions, many of which we've heard from different sources and places, some emails, text messages that we received through the city's texting system, phone calls, and then, of course, also some from social media and other places. So as I present this, and if you've heard anything, and I'm maybe not addressing the question quite how you've heard it, Mayor and Council will stop me, and we can answer them better. And then, when we're done, we can move into the public hearing. So first of all, we're going to be talking about the Rec Center. This is an image of what it would look like when it's done. Purpose of tonight's agenda, as the mayor said, is to receive input regarding this bond issuance, provides one more forum of public input on the subject, and provides an opportunity to learn of and consider additional points of view that may not have been considered or known before. Public hearings for this type of bond are required by law, and they're required before bonds can be issued. Unfortunately, the process, as I mentioned, is kind of elongated and can be confusing. And so several weeks ago, we approved, you approved, a resolution, we call it a parameters resolution, that sets the table for what could be considered, and this is then a next step in that process. It's not another, it's just the next step in that process. After the public hearing tonight, you'll take public comment, close the public hearing, and then there is an item to be considered later on the agenda in the new business section that is a new debt resolution. That is the final administrative step that we have before the process can then continue on. One question that we've heard a few times in a few different places is, is this another tax increase tonight? And I want to be really clear that this is not. This process is about the bonds, not the actions you're taking are not going to increase a property tax rate again. I think it's important to note, we had a truth in taxation hearing, and you adjusted the property tax rate in August of 2022. The current budget that we're in did not have a property tax increase, and we're considering for the next year, also does not. This action tonight is simply about the bonds. You've put the framework in place for the structure to pay back those bonds already. Now we're ready to issue those bonds. So this is simply about that debt issuance. Another question, and candidly, I'd never considered, was with this being a sales tax bond, and I'll try to touch on what that means here in a moment, are you raising the sales tax rate in Spanish Fork? And the answer to that is no. It's just simply a bond that is backed by the sales tax. We get a lot of questions about the Rec Center, so I'll show a few images and talk through with these images, try to answer some questions. First of all, is where is it going to be? It's on the corner of Volunteer Drive and Main Street. This is a shot from the south, looking kind of north, northwest of the area, and we've acquired the properties there. You can see in this image, this was probably in the fall, late fall, and it looks a lot different now, we'll see in a couple of pictures. So that's the location. The Rec Center will have a couple of different swimming and aquatic components. First, we'll be, we'll talk about the outdoor. You can see in the top right image, it'll have kind of a fun lazy river and zero depth component with some slides, and then we'll have a secondary outside pool that we can use for different programming and opportunities there. A lot of deck space with access to the outdoor pool from outside of the Rec Center, so people can just come to the outdoor swimming pool if they want to. I believe that's how you're setting that up, right, Dale, for your operations? We'll also have a couple of indoor elements on the top right. I said top right before, I meant top left, for the outdoor stuff. Top right is the indoor stuff for the kids with some play elements of zero depth, as well as kind of in the back, you can see that little log cabin-y thing, that'll be a cliff you can jump off of. I think it's going to be 30 or 40 feet. I didn't get any eyes, nobody looked up. I think I felt a few from the back here, but no, it won't be that high. But it'll be fun for the kids to jump off of, and some neat elements there. And then we have some flat water or swimming pools. You can see in the bottom left that there will be lanes for swim teams. We anticipate school district swim teams being able to swim here, practice here, and then you can see the bleachers kind of in the back there, where we'll be able to have a lot of great meets, region meets, even some state tournaments, and we anticipate some other competitions that will probably want to rent this for their competitions too, outside of just the high school swimming. So that gives you a brief look at some of the aquatic elements of the Rec Center. There will also be a lot of space for different fitness opportunities, a track. You can see in that top image, that gray and red material, that's actually, those are lanes that circumnavigate the second floor. There's really cool element to track. At some point, you'll be able to go up and down, so you'll get some incline and some decline if you want. You can also skip that and just stay level, but provide some variation for you to walk, which is especially helpful, I think, as we're coming out of winter, you know, it's great now, but a couple of months ago, it was pretty tough for people to be able to walk outside. So this will give our residents the ability to walk indoors. You can see images of different workout apparatus, basketball court, and in the bottom right, you can see some indoor pickleball courts. That indoor pickleball court is actually a multi-use surface that will serve a lot of purposes, but one of which we can put down some nets and play some indoor pickleball. The Rec Center will also have a senior and senior center, community center amenities, most of which you already have, you know about, if you go to the Rec Center today. And here are some images of the entry on the top right, and then of kind of that great space where we have meals, we'll have meals and different activities with a stage there. There will be other activities not shown in these images, but it'll be a great element for the seniors. I think probably most special for them is quick access to the Rec Center itself. There will be a separate entrance for the senior center, but they'll be able to just walk right from the senior center into the Rec Center and go and use those elements. And I think pretty quickly in the development and use of this facility, those seniors will find that there are wonderful times where they will have access to the facility much to themselves. Other times where they probably won't want to go because there will be a lot of people, but there will be times that will be wonderful and ideal for them, and we really are excited about the multi-use function of the facility. This image, these images rather are some fairly recent images of the construction. You can see in the big image at the center that walls are starting to go vertical. Those are elements of the pumps and the systems for the swimming pools. Those go pretty deep, and that was the first element to be constructed. We have footings and foundations that have also been dug, and we'll start to see some vertical work happen more and more as we continue on the next even few weeks. All right, enough of those images, timeline. We'll start to see that vertical element now. Footings and foundations will be completed here in the next few weeks, and then in May, we'll see structural steel start. And by September, the masonry and steel will be completed, and they'll start to roof it, and then, once the roof is on, then they'll start the indoor elements of this. And then a lot of work will happen that few people will see, because it will all be behind those walls, and then, if everything works right, and we've constructed a couple of things in COVID, so we know that strange things can still happen. Boy, we sure hope that strange things stop happening. But if everything continues on as it is, we expect to have the pools completed by late summer, and the structure completed by September. Even though the pools are completed by August, we probably won't open them, but we will be using them, testing them, getting them ready, and then look for an opening in the latter part of September or October. For now, why don't we just call it Fall of 2025? All right, one question we often get, maybe the loudest question that we do here, is why wasn't this on the ballot? I think we talked about this a good deal with the truth in taxation hearing in August, and I think it's a great question to ask, a great question to answer, and this is one of those questions that sometimes can be frustrating for people as they hear it and don't necessarily understand the nature of questions that are asked on ballots. But probably the simplest way to answer this question is, the ballot question in 2015 was about a funding mechanism. And in fact, the language from that ballot was something like this, shall the city council be authorized to issue general obligation bonds for the purpose of paying all of the costs of constructing a new life center? And so the ballot question really was only about a general obligation bond and not necessarily on the project itself. And that can be, as I mentioned, maybe something that's frustrating people, and I totally understand that. But the question was about the general obligation bond, and the reason that we have to put a general obligation, we have to put a general obligation bond on the ballot, that is required by law, because a general obligation bond leverages property tax as the collateral for the bond. When you and I buy a house, the home is the collateral. When you and I buy a car, the car is the collateral. When we bond for something and we use a general obligation bond, actually, property taxes are the collateral, and so the residents are giving the permission for that to be put up as the collateral, not the building. And most of the times, we think, well, the building is the collateral, because that's the world that we live in, we understand the most, right, with our homes. But with a GO bond, a general obligation bond, that is all about property tax. So GO bonds, general obligation bonds must be voted on by the public. Cities can do general obligation bonds, school districts, and so you see those potentially on ballots for cities and schools. A sales tax bond is not collateralized by property tax, it is collateralized by sales tax. What that means is that if we fail to make the bond, they, the creditors, have the ability to come in and grab our sales tax. Of course, we don't plan on defaulting on a general obligation bond or on a sales tax bond, but that's the collateral for this bond, is the sales tax. And because the sales tax is, it does not require a vote, then that's why it's not on the ballot. As we mentioned in the truth in taxation hearing in 2022, in August of 22, we estimated that there would be about 40% of the debt that would be paid for with property taxes. At that time, you, as a council, voted to adjust property taxes, and that happened a year and a half ago in the property tax amounts from 2022. Enough on that one. This is a look at what we presented in that presentation. That generally shows where the funds would come from to pay for the bond of the Rec Center. About 40% coming from RAP tax, that's sales tax, about 40% coming from property tax, and then about 10% coming from the sales tax specifically that we receive. So RAP tax is a sales tax, but it's a separate fund that must be used for recreation, arts or parks interests. A small portion of it will come from impact fees. We would love to use more impact fees for this, but we can only use impact fees for things that currently exist and are growing. Let me explain. We don't have a Rec Center today, we've never had a Rec Center today, so we cannot use impact fees to build a Rec Center for the first time. If we were going to build a second Rec Center, which we're not proposing to do, but if we were to build a second Rec Center, we could use impact fees to pay for that. But we cannot use impact fees to pay for the first thing that we have. Case in point, we didn't have pickleball courts in 2018, so we couldn't use impact fees to build the first eight pickleball courts. But we knew that we could, we were going to grow, and we took advantage of building economies, so we built eight pickleball courts without impact fees, and then we built eight more with growth. And we think, I think we needed those right away. But with this, we had a pool. We're comfortable and confident that we can use, we had a pool, and we're going to have more pools. So there is an element of impact fees that we can use, because we're now having more pools, and so that's why it's there in a small amount, not in the large amount. And some people might think, well, I would rather use more impact fees. We will use as much impact fee as we can, but are confident that we cannot use as much as some may like. Another question that we hear is, the project's already started, why are you waiting until now to bond? And I think this is a great question, and the timing certainly can cause people to scratch their heads. In order to meet project deadlines, we have moved as quickly as we can, but through the process, there were a few things that needed to happen. First of all, we needed to finalize the design, and that design was finalized in the fall. We needed to secure the location and make sure that all of the properties were acquired. Then, and I'll show a slide in a second about interest savings, so I'll hold comments about that. And then lastly, we needed to finalize construction costs. And we had that final GMP, that final guaranteed maximum price that you awarded in December of just a few months ago. So timing was an issue, and making sure that we could do everything. But probably for me, one of the greatest reasons why we've waited, this is a chart of interest rates, and as we've watched interest rates go up and down, you know, if we could have nailed the right time, it would have been to bond for anything and everything in 2021. That's slightly off the chart here, but it's the stuff that's way low. As interest rates have gone up for everybody, they've gone up for us as well, and so we've been watching the interest rates go up and down, and we know that they have plateaued right now, and we're watching, and as they start to dip downward, we'll be poised to issue this debt. All right. Projected terms of the bond. Although we have a parameters resolution that says 65 million, and that was a number you mentioned today, the parameters resolution gives interest rates and all of that stuff. It's meant to be a guide that allows for the bonding market to do what we need it to do. But in maybe layman's terms, in language that you and I, we use every day in how we buy our houses or buy our cars, let's use, let's maybe speak that way. The true interest cost, or you and I might describe that simply as the interest rate. It's not quite, but what you and I would call the interest rate will be somewhere between three and a half to 4%. Construction proceeds, what we will receive from the bond will be about 61,500,000. And we would expect to close somewhere in the middle to late April, but with the authority that you've given us, we'll work with our financial advisors to watch that interest rate, and if we see that interest rates are falling and there's reason to wait, every basis point that it comes down is saving. So we would continue to watch that be, and pull the trigger at the best time that we can. Certainly, if we see interest rates are going up, we'll pull the trigger faster, because we don't want to, we don't want to have that rate go up. So those are the terms of what we're really talking about doing with this bond. Any questions that you've heard that maybe I can answer possibly before we go to the public hearing?
I'll ask one real quick. Why, will you just explain why we're asking for 65 million then, if the construction cost is 61.5?
So we're only asking for 61.5.
Okay.
But the resolution that you approved said 65.
Is 65.
Yeah, it gives us, it gives us windows, and you always want to give yourself, you know, a little bit of room as you're going through things, but even though the resolution says 65.
We're only asking this now.
Yeah, the bond will be 61.5.
Okay, and I think the other things I see on social media, social media a lot, if you can address this, Seth, is the things that we had to do, like purchase homes and land prior to this, does this cover any of that, or did we use savings prior to that? Will you go over that?
Yeah, we used other project funds that we had saved and whatnot to do all of that. So this is all construction costs. We've actually been spending budgeted funds that we've, we have budgeted as well up until about this time already, anyway. So those lands, those properties were purchased through negotiations with the homeowners. I've heard of a time or two, people talking about it being taken, that nothing was taken, they were negotiated sales. And yeah, we used funds that the city had put aside and set for that purpose, maybe over the last previous two fiscal years, FY '22 and '23, as well as some, I guess, in 2024.
Thank you.
Go ahead. So the project's underway, saw the pictures, footings in the ground. We've used some money on construction. Is the 61.5, does that pay back the funds that we've used on the construction?
Not really. There might be, you know, depending on when the money gets here and how that, it'll just go into the construction fund. Right now, we're just spending money in the construction fund. There's not any money taken from this place or that place, it's what we put into the construction fund, and so it'll just go right into that construction fund.
Okay, so I guess an easier question than is, let's say we spent 10 million, which I don't know that we have, on construction. We put 61 million in there, it's not 71 million dollars for the construction, it's still 61 million dollars.
Yeah, the construction.
It just stays in the construction fund, and we use it for another project in the future?
No, the GMP.
Well, yeah, maybe that was a better question. What was the GMP?
Yeah, the GMP for the construction, I think, was around 71, 72, and so, yeah, this is just the amount that we're bonding for. Very similar to a down payment, right? When you buy your house, you buy it for 400,000, but you only get a loan for 350.
Okay. I think one of the biggest questions I get is, so much has changed from when we started this process today, and some of that is the total construction costs, right? I think when in, I think, Mike, you announced in 2022.
Yeah, March.
That we were going to start moving forward with this, and we progressed all the way, and it was 65 million dollars was the sort of the top end, we're at 71 now, and that's been two years, so I can see just inflation grew that number.
Correct.
So that's something that's changed, and that's why this is a little bit, while it's still within the parameters that we talked about in '22 in terms of a bond, it's the total cost of the project is slightly higher.
Yes, and I really appreciated from the UDOT presentation, something that they had on that slide, they showed costs of different interchanges, and you might remember, you saw one, 165, 195, and one, I think, 220. But up in the heading, it said, in today's dollars, and that is a real factor as you look at something that spans a couple of years. If you could lock in the prices and everything right now, it would be better, but you can't. And so, yeah, I think you look at that in 2022, and you say, in 2022 dollars, that's what it was, and apply construction inflation, which I think last year was 15%, which is an, it's a crazy number, it's an unusual number, but it's the real number that we dealt with. So, yeah.
So back in 2022, when we made the decision to raise property tax, to fund some of this, not all of this, the percentages you showed were the percentage we talked about then. They haven't not changed. The funding sources are still the same, the percentages are still the same. So this isn't, again, we're not using full property tax to fund this.
Yeah, and when we issued, when we set up the payment structure back in 2022, we used some generous estimates, we used some generous interest rates, we're coming in a little bit higher on the interest rate and a little bit lower on the bond amount. We used a 60 to 65, so being conservative, we targeted that 65 amount, and we went, we thought we were crazy, and we were using interest rates from three to three and a half, and so we're going to be a little bit above that. So we were, we were a little bit low in how we estimate our interest rates, but we were a little bit high on the dollar amount. So it comes out still within our target.
And at that time, were we talking a 25-year note? I can't remember.
Yes, we were.
Okay, so that's consistent as well.
Yeah, there is a provision, and we fully intend to exercise the provision, that by year 10, we can, in layman's terms, we can refinance that bond, and we would look to shorten it to a 10-year note at that point. We would, we would be looking in 10 years for interest rates to be lower and be able to take that savings and lower the overall cost, and perhaps shorten the timeline.
Thanks.
Cool, a couple of questions I have written down is, in August 2022, right, when they did the truth in taxation, we had a public hearing, or the council at the time had a public hearing. Why do we have to do a public hearing now?
So that was a public hearing about the tax increase, and that was when the council kind of set everything in motion, we're doing this. And we started the design in earnest and hired the contractors. This is a public hearing about the debt issuance, and only about that.
I just had to receive that question once. And then the other question that I have, and I know Jordan has talked about this recently, so I don't know if it's him or you that would best answer this, is, as we talk about bonds, why do we use bonds or debt to pay for the infrastructure and not save the money for those?
Oh, I love that question. Do you want to take it, though, Jordan? He's got a bright green shirt on, so we'll let him. We'll let the spotlight hit Jordan.
It is March. The reason to issue debt rather than saving, using cash on hand, when you use cash on hand, you have to save up. In order to save up for 65 million dollars, you'd be saving up for years. She'd be punishing the past generation for a project that's going to benefit the future generation, where when you issue debt, you're able to have those that benefit from the project over the next three decades pay for the project.
So as we, as we just mentioned a moment ago, construction costs last year went up 15%. So if, two years ago, the project, we estimated it would be between 55, or let's say around 55 to 60 million dollars, but we save, you know, a couple million dollars every year, it would probably take us 20 years to save that. We would need to save 100 million dollars. And if you live in town today and your money's going towards that savings, you're not using it. But 20 years later, when you build it, the people that move in that 21st year, they're not paying anything for it, and they're the ones taking advantage of it. And so this allows us to do something and let us that are using it be the ones that pay for it.
Can I follow, sorry?
Just go, okay.
Just to follow, oh, go, dude, go.
No, 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 it's follow-up, go ahead.
Just to follow up on that, though, Jesse, I mean, you, not only do you get to use the thing sooner, and the generation that's paying for it gets to use it, it's far more cost effective, right? I mean, you're, how do you, you would still need to pass the property tax increase so that you could collect the additional money to pay for it in some future date, but now you're collecting it for 30-plus years. It goes from 60, 70 million to 140 million, and you're never, how do you catch up, right? It's just breathing.
Target you never hit.
Yeah. Sorry.
Oh, that's great. One question that I imagine residents will have about this is, in regards to my property taxes increasing, when, when does that start? And then when does it end? And I know I've kind of touched indirectly about this a little bit tonight, but is it 25 years? I just think that's something that maybe you could talk about as far as how that affects them and when. Yeah, that, that went into effect with the property tax year 2022, so with what residents would have paid that tax year with, let's say, their November tax bill, that's when that rate started. This debt will be retired at the moment, right, that 25 years from now, and so you could conceivably pull that off in 25 years. If you, if we were able to refinance or refund that debt inside that 10-year window, then that might change. That is something that that council will be able to do 25 years from now. Or I guess if the circumstances change and they want to adjust it later, or sooner they could, but that would be a function of the finances of the city, you know, at some future date.
I have another thought, if you can share it or articulate it better than me. We raised property taxes approximately $4.90 on average per home. Let's say right now, there's 12,000 residents in Spanish Fork, and let's say in two years, there's 13,000 residents. Will everyone still be paying the $4.90, or will you explain how that actually would take your monthly property tax down?
Yeah, that's a tricky.
Homes, not residents.
Did I say residents?
Well, you probably meant residency.
I meant homes, well, homes to pay your property tax on, yeah.
The property tax bill won't probably go down, because new homes move in. The rate will be what the rate is, and that new home will pay it. But the way we've structured this, we're, we're going to use some future property tax from those residents to pay some future portions of this, so it allows for them to buy in a little bit more, and these, the residents that are here now won't be paying the 4.90 today, and those guys, when they move in 10 years from now, the rate might look like it's $3.80 inside of that blended rate. That's really confusing. I'm not helping answer the question at all. The rate probably won't be going down with what they pay.
It'll stay the same then.
It will probably stay the same, yeah, for everybody. Let me rephrase. The rate probably will go down, the amount they're paying will probably stay the same. That's the way that truth in taxation and property tax laws work. That was a terrible answer, sorry.
I just remembered.
I wish property taxes was a lot less confusing, but it's really.
You might have the chance to redeem yourself after the public hearing.
We'll let Jordan.
Yeah, Jordan can redeem you. A couple of questions before I entertain the motion to go into public hearing, that I appreciate those good questions that we've all been asked by residents from the city. that I appreciate those good questions that we've all been asked by, by residents from the city. G M P, speak more to that. That's a scary figure that, that we talk about, U dot and all those big numbers. And this is a big number because nobody builds a seventy million dollar house in Spanish Fork. It's hard for us to contemplate when we compare it to a home. We're just, we're trying to finance hundreds of thousands of dollars worth of home debt, not seventy million. But the guaranteed maximum price of a builder that has built large structures all over the world and everything else that's on this project gives us a guaranteed maximum price that says, this is what we can get materials for, labor for. That's why we're willing to give you that price. Is that correct?
You did a great job. Yeah.
You don't want to add to that at all?
I, the only thing I'll add is, that does include two million of contingency, so the likelihood of it being that amount probably, probably won't be. There'll be somebody that does come down because we won't, we usually don't spend all of the contingency, but we have it there in case we need it. But yeah, that, that is, the guaranteed maximum price is a good thing. It, it provides for flexibility, the, the contractor can do what they want. They can exercise the control that they need. Our contractor spent a lot of time making sure that they reviewed everything, looked under every cushion and every, every bid amount. They spent, I wanna say it was two or three months, making sure that they had interacted with every contractor, subcontractor that they were looking at to get it right. And we had done a lot of value engineering through the architectural process. When we got the first set of bids, it revealed other areas that we thought we could do some value engineering still. And so that two or three-month window, that from when we got original bids to when we finalized that guaranteed maximum price, that G M P, we were able to do some good work with that, the contractor as well. So it's a good, it's a good number, and, and it's somewhat inflation-proof during the eighteen to twenty-two months or so of the, of the construction.
Acronyms are tough to always pick up on the G M P side of it. I guess the other acronym-
U E.
Yeah, whatever that, that's an acronym?
Single Point Urban Interface. Interchange, not interface, interchange.
I thought you guys were making it up.
We did.
The other acronym that you've talked about tonight, we've talked about for years in Spanish Fork is the rap tax. The, 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 All Abilities Park has been discussed tonight. Other facilities that you see around town, the rap tax that was on the ballot two thousand-
I wanna say eighteen-ish?
Eighteen, something like that is maybe what we're going into. So it's on the ballot for residents to vote on. It was voted and, and, and voted in favor of to have the additional sales tax revenue of one penny on every ten dollars on your sales tax bill, on not all items, but certain items. That, that is revenue that comes into Spanish Fork, stands for Recreation, Arts and Parks. So that tax you can only spend on recreation, arts and parks. And so I appreciate Seth, the detail of, well, this, you know, this bond isn't on the ballot. No, revenue bonds aren't typically on the ballot. General obligation bonds are, revenue bonds aren't. But the engagement with the public of asking about rap tax and, hey, this can only go to recreation, arts and parks, is a tax that you've already been paying for now eight, so, so it's going on, what, seven, six, seven years? The visitors to Spanish Fork have been paying for it too. When you talk to the, the businesses in town that generate sales tax, Kathleen can speak to this, she works with them in the Chamber of Commerce. But when we get those figures, it's about a sixty, forty split.
Seventy, thirty.
We're going up?
Yeah, at least sixty-five now, yeah.
So, so seventy percent of your sales tax revenue we collect in Spanish Fork is from people that don't live in eight, four, six, six, zero. So think about all the discussion we've had of traffic tonight, of, hey, it's tough, yeah, it is. It's a lot of people visiting your restaurants, your car dealerships, your Costcos, everywhere else that are facilitating some of the things you can do. I, I told, I've told people this before, but I, I don't think I was quite elected when we used to celebrate a million dollars a year in sales tax revenue in Spanish Fork. The difference from now of what you collect is over a million dollars a month in sales tax revenue.
Yeah, and I think it's, that's a great point, Mayor. If you look at this rough outline of, of funding sources, property tax, of course, comes from us as residents. Rap tax is a sales tax, so seventy-ish, seventy-ish percent of that forty percent will come from non-residents. And then sales tax, that same thing is, that same split exists, right? So seventy percent. So adding those two, roughly seventy percent of fifty percent will be paid for by non-residents, which is a significantly different proposal than what we were looking back at in two thousand fifteen, where it was all on the, the property tax then. And that was something that we talked about. We got a lot of feedback after that election. We, we listened everywhere we could, took great, great notes, and had wonderful conversations with residents about how they voted, why they voted. And, and having diversified structures for paying for it was one of them. But can you use sales tax, and is there any way to have those from outside help? And this is a, this is a great way that we've been able to structure it now with, with that rap tax. And probably just as important is that this isn't using all of the rap tax money. You've already set a, a standard of what you're using rap tax for, replacing playgrounds. You, you have a number of grants. You spend about a hundred thousand dollars a year doing internal art grants as well as some external grants to groups that qualify. And that will continue, and, and it has the ability to grow inside of that fund as well. So this doesn't take away from any of those things that you've already been doing and have set a precedence that you wanna keep doing.
Two more questions, and maybe they'll be asked too, but, but they can be re-asked if they need to be. The O and M has always been a, a discussion about this too. No, it's probably what has given Dale gray hair. I think he had dark hair before this. But O and M on all the facilities in, in, inside the city, O and M on this facility is something, right? O and M on a, on a recreation center is certainly a, a big number. I guess, and this was talked about again when we were talking about originally proposing to raise taxes for this purpose a couple of years ago, the O and M of just roughly, let's take the senior center and the pool together. The pool, if you were to just classify it as how much we collect in pool fees to go to our old pool, and Jordan maybe has these more exact figures, but I remember the round numbers being, hey, every year that you open that and collect fees for people to come in, and they can swim for four months, because that's the summer months, still, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars at least shy after the repairs you have to do, after the lifeguards you have to pay, after everything you gotta do, the chlorine, whatever, to make that pool function. The same, if you're looking at the senior center. Senior center is not a, 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 a financial venture for a community. It's not for ours. Kevin, you're not even here to speak to it. I hope you're watching this. That's his, that's his place as assignment of, as a councilman. But the, the senior center is not, we don't charge enough money for the lunches, the dinners, the, 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 the get-togethers and everything else that's done with the senior center is about a hundred and fifty thousand shy. No, I'm low there? So more, okay? Couple hundred?
Three hundred.
Three hundred. So three hundred shy of covering itself there. So when people start talking about deficit with, with what the rec center is going to be, whatnot, you know, those numbers are still being fleshed out and everything, you don't know until it's open and, and running and going. But those projections that we've obviously run, just realize you, you have been for years, for as long as you had a pool, twenty-something years, and as long as you've had a senior center, that's a hundred years. I don't know how long senior-
Not that long.
It's a long time. You've been paying, those, those, those don't make enough money to pay for their services. It's our taxpayers covering it. We project that same subsidy, if you will, that's not the right word, but we project that same thing to kind of facilitate going forward in the recreation center.
Yeah, that, I, we do, but we also don't. Our plan includes it paying for itself.
Sure.
And, and the rate structures that we're looking at, and the operation, and, and frankly, growing into some of the operations. So you don't do everything all at once, but you kind of grow into some, some of the elements. So when you can afford to do it, you do it. But yeah, the senior center today has a budget of about three hundred and twenty, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Last year, they spent about three hundred and twenty, and they bring in about twenty thousand dollars in revenue. It's not a profit center, and it's not why we do it, and we're happy that we do it. So this is by no means a conversation about, about, you know, the money that we're spending there. But yeah, it's a, it brings in about two hundred, or twenty thousand dollars in revenue and, and has a budget of about three hundred and fifty.
I appreciate those numbers in a little bit of detail. The last question, taking on this amount of debt. We have, we have other debt that we've spoken of here, of sewer treatment plant, the transfer station portion of, of what our expenses are, not necessarily the same kind of debt or whatever we share in with, with cities and that stuff. But we got a lot of city projects going on. We've, we've covered this before, but adding this amount of bond proceeds to the city, does that put us in financial peril? Does that downgrade our rating? Are we putting ourselves at risk of, of a city?
No. Taking on debt is a serious issue and is something you always do carefully and, and with, with excellent care, consideration and due process. Most of the debt that we have is associated with different utilities, and each of those has their own bank account, their, their own revenue source. So the sewer bond is in the sewer fund, and the sewer rate covers that. This is general fund debt, and it will be in the general fund. We only have, we only have one other bond out, a large bond out with the, the Justice Center. That'll come off in two thousand twenty-seven. We have a couple of inter-fund loans that we've used some money that the general fund is paying back to some of those enterprise funds on a shorter term, but, and those are pretty small. But, but this, this general fund debt, you've got the structure in place, you've set aside the revenue for it, and you have a, a good rating. Our, we actually just got our rating today. The city's got a double A rating. As a small city of forty-five thousand people, double A is a great rating. The state of Utah has a triple A rating. Their budget's, you know, twenty billion, different, different category than us. So we're really happy with the rating that we got. A rating is very much like a credit score for a city. And Jonathan Ward from Zions Bank is here somewhere. If you want him to speak on the rating, he could certainly do that. But yeah, we got that today, and we're pleased that we got a double A. Candidly, we were hoping for a double A plus. But we'll probably get upgraded to a double A plus sometime in the, the tenure of this bond.
We'll blame Jordan for not being double A plus.
No, we're, double A's great, and we've been double A, and we're still double A's.
Okay, perfect.